Good evening. It is 6:30, Monday, September 21st, 2020. This is the Carney Board of Alderman Meeting. Calling meeting to order. Stand for the Pledge of Legions, please. Shirley, have you had a chance to take roll?
I have taken roll call and everybody is present and you have a quorum.
Great, thank you. Board, you'll see in front of you the consent agenda. Any questions or discussion on the consent agenda? If there are no questions or discussion, can we motion entertain to pass the consent agenda as presented?
I make a motion to pass the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Consent agenda passes. We'll move on to Mayor's remarks. Before I talk about the CARES Act funding request, I do want to bring up, about an hour ago, I was contacted by the city administrator. Our current city policy leave of absence requires any leave of absence to be granted for any specific period of time. Is that the discretion of the city and only with approval from the Board of Aldermen? We do have an employee, Colton Michael, who is requesting two days of leave of absence for a vacation. On his hire, he was only granted five days of vacation. So, the plan is to allow him two days to attend a family vacation out of state and borrow that from future accrual for the next calendar year. I would like us to entertain approving that request by a simple motion and approval of the board.
So moved. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? That means that Colton does not have to go home and tell his wife he cannot go on vacation. So, Colton, the board approved that for you. Safe travels. And while we're on that topic, I would like consideration from the board. This is obviously from our new policy that was updated by Ivan Schrader out of St. Louis. Consideration of the board to amend that policy to allow our city administrator to approve that, or the Board of Aldermen. They kind of put that in there to where every one of these requests would not have to come to the board. It would give him discretion to do that.
I would say that we would also want to be able to have them come to the board if they didn't get the answer they wanted, that we could also take a look at it. They have a place for an appeal.
Okay. Is that something we want to, by unanimous motion of the board, update this evening? Or do we want to work on that and come back at a future date?
Probably should have a written resolution that-
Future date, okay.
Yeah, I want to see how it's going to- how it's written.
How it's worded.
Fair enough. Jim, if you could work on that, please?
Do that.
I would appreciate it. Next, we'll move on to Item 3A under Mayor's remarks. I hope everybody has had a chance to review this. I had a meeting with Dr. Miller. We meet quite frankly, frequently. And during that meeting, we were talking about COVID, the pandemic, and how that was affecting the school this year. Enclosed is a letter after our discussion, our request to Dr. Miller sending me, our superintendent of schools for the Carney School District, requesting CARES Act funding from the City of Carney. Based on our estimated fund balance of $783,963.49 and reserving funding for possible revenue loss, Carney Fire Department, Carney Police Department salaries, and our current expenses, my math below shows that we have adequate funding to be able to assist the Carney School District with $300,000 of the CARES Act funding to reimburse them to purchase computers related and equipment necessary to conduct their educational programming and maintain a safe environment during the COVID-19 pandemic. I believe that technology is an approved CARES Act expense and are worthy use of the CARES Act funds. My message here is we are one community and that we're all in this together. I believe it's extremely important for us to support our school district and recommend the board give strong consideration to approving the enclosed resolution and memorandum of understanding. I did, as you see, as of September 16th, verify the fund balance with the city administrator. And like I said, reserving some additional funds. We have the ability to help out the school district. Just a reminder, currently, at year end, the current legislation on this funds is if we do not use it in some way, then we would write a check and send it back to the government. So, if there are any additional funding left at the end of the year, we could possibly look at helping out the school district or any of our other community partners to keep that money in the city if possible. Any questions or discussions before we put that to vote for consideration?
Mayor, can you tell me what the original balance was? Because I know we've already allocated, I think, $50,000 to Liberty Hospital and $125,000, I think, or-
Yeah, the balance as of September 16th is our net balance. So, it was roughly around a million dollars of CARES Act funding we received from Quay County. So, that balance, like I said, that balance is already minus the grants that we give to businesses and the Liberty Hospital grant plus our current expenses from the City of Carney and the Fire District to date.
Thank you.
That amount will be in the budget.
If there are no other questions or discussion from the board, we're going to entertain motion to pass the resolution.
I'd make a resolution, or motion that would pass the resolution as seen in 3A.
With the attached memorandum of understanding.
Okay, we're going to put on those together?
I would do them together.
Yes.
Okay, I will amend my motion to include the memorandum of understanding also attached in 3A.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Jim, does this require one reading?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Yeah, Jim, do you want to read that by title only? Sorry, I jumped ahead there.
Yeah, I was going to point out that the resolution does incorporate the memorandum of understanding. And our city attorney made sure to emphasize that the letter from the school district be attached to the memorandum of understanding, which the memorandum of understanding actually refers to. So, it is a complete thing. A resolution authorizing the mayor to sign a memorandum of understanding with the Carney R1 School District relative to the CARES Act funding. And you guys have made the motion, David Lehman made it, and-
Seconded by Alderman Barger.
Seconded by Alderman Barger, and the vote is unanimous.
Thank you. I really appreciate the board's support. And I think you're going to see, right now, we'll pull this shortly. We'll move on to Administrator's report.
Mr. Mayor, we are pleased to report that our bond issue for the I-35, the big issue, the $28.8 million bond issue, did receive a 1.83 interest cost. That's a true interest cost, they call it. And we are scheduled to close on September 29th. We are hearing informally that MoDOT may push the bid project, the bid letting, back due to their inability to acquire all right-of-way. At least one month to December, if not later. At the closing of the September 29th bond, the initial plan is to proceed to deposit the city's share of the MoDOT Construction Fund, which is $17,776,412 pursuant to the ordinance 1418-2020. We adopted that in January. That is the latest number that we're to give to them, although there's additional transfers that will be made. The balance of the proceeds will be placed in a MOSIP account, which is Missouri Securities Investment Program. And you guys authorized us to set up those accounts. And they have been a great benefit to the city and appreciate that we have set one up specifically for the balance of the funds. And that bond closing is scheduled to happen. We are hopeful that the right-of-way negotiations will conclude without the necessity of imminent domain proceedings, which will slow the project even more. So, it is in the right-of-way thing and, you know, it's out of our control at this time. Wish I could be the persuasive guy that closed the deal. But this is a MoDOT-driven thing. We have some right-of-way to acquire, but the parties we've talked to so far have not pushed back. And quite frankly, our timetable for the Nation Road Roundabout is a year later. We won't start that project till a year later. So, our deadline for the right-of-way acquisition on that is a lot softer.
So, we're down, how many tracks are we down to that we've not required?
Well, we've got kind of a verbal with-
I'm talking for the MoDOT piece. What's left?
The Steve Nicholson's property and Gary Shenks' property, if you're wanting to know the properties. I don't know if I'm supposed to say that out loud or not, but those have not been secured-
Okay.
-as we understand them. But anyway, it's a federal process. And, you know, I'm simply reporting to you guys that when people ask you why we are not able to proceed, it's because they have to conclude their acquisition of that right-of-way. And it's, you know, can't do it without it. So, Mr. Mayor, that concludes my report.
Okay. Thank you. We'll move on next to public requests and public petitions.
Mr. Mayor, Ron Cowgar of AGC Engineers and Chris Shipley are representing Deer Valley are online with Zoom. They are seeking approval of both the third and fourth final plats of Cottonwood Creek's single-family subdivision of 16 and 24 lots respectively. So, that's 40 new lots that they would be developing. At their September 14th meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended to approve both plats. The minutes of that meeting are enclosed, along with the city staff report. David Pavlich is online. And our board liaison, Kathy Barger, is of course present. And if they have additional comments, we'd invite them at this time. Mr. David? Did we lose David?
No, I was on mute. I had to go unmute myself. I don't really have additional comments. It's, both are final plats. The board might remember that last year, just about a year ago this month, I think it might have been August, we approved Cottonwood Creek Third Plat. And it is an area that covers the new Cottonwood Creek Fourth Plat. But things have moved along so well in those first two phases, they felt they needed to finish out that subdivision. And so, you're seeing both remaining phases come together. There are separate phases, so there are separate ordinances that we prepared. However, staff reports that went to the Planning and Zoning Commission went together at the same time.
Mr. Mayor, there are two separate ordinances, one for each.
You could read, we'll put on them separate, if you could read the first one by title only for consideration.
An ordinance repealing ordinance number 1401-2019 and approving a new final plat of Cottonwood Creek Third Plat, a subdivision in Carney, Missouri, and accepting dedication of right-of-way and easements thereon.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve that as read.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Second reading by title only, please.
An ordinance repealing ordinance number 1401-2019 and approving a new final plat of Cottonwood Creek Third Plat, a subdivision in Carney, Missouri, and accepting dedication of right-of-way and easements thereon.
I make a motion?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Pull the board, please.
Alderman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Alderman Barger?
Aye.
The vote is unanimous, Mr. Mayor.
If you could read the second ordinance by title only, please.
Thank you. An ordinance approving a final plat of Cottonwood Creek Fourth Plat, a subdivision in Carney, Missouri, and accepting dedication of right-of-way and easements thereon.
I make a motion to approve the ordinance as read.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Second reading, please, by title only.
An ordinance approving a final plat of Cottonwood Creek Fourth Plat, a subdivision in Carney, Missouri, and accepting dedication of right-of-way and easements thereon.
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Pull the board, please.
Alderman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Alderman Barger?
Aye.
The vote is unanimous, Mr. Mayor.
Ron, thanks for being on and appreciate you and the applicant contributing to working Carney.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. Everybody stay safe.
You did your-
Bye-bye.
We'll move on to public hearings.
Mr. Mayor, a public hearing has been scheduled to consider a request from Mark Riles to vacate an easement. It's a utility easement that was platted on West Ridge Business Center. He intends to plant the property for development of many storage buildings. And he's following along the guidance of city staff in this route to first get this done. After a similar public hearing on September 14th, the Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended four to zero to approve the easement vacation. And David Pavlich is online and he can explain the process, who all were notified, because we notify all the utilities to make sure that those easements are not in use. And so, I want him to be able to declare those efforts so we have a record that we have done those due diligence items, David.
First, I would like to say that if you see the participant list, Mark Riles is in attendance. He is the person marked as Samsung on his phone. He's having a problem getting with the audio. He can hear all of you, but he can't talk. So, I have him actually on speakerphone in my office. Hopefully, if there's some communication there, then that can be made and everybody can understand. As far as notice, vacating an easement, we do contact all the utility companies that serve our area for comment. We don't want to vacate an easement that maybe one of those utilities might be located in. We believe it is vacant. We also post notice in the newspaper as well, which is a standard practice. The applicants gone through with their survey and engineer, no utilities were identified there. I did speak to two specifically that said they were not in that corridor spectrum. And I can't remember the other one. It's in the staff report. We do talk to the gas company. They also said that they weren't in that corridor. They do have a review process that includes several people in several different departments. Mark Riles' goal is, he will own all of Lot 1 and part of Lot 2. That utility easement ends up in the middle of that property where that lot line would be. They will replat the property to remove that lot line through the middle of the property. There's a public hearing required to remove that easement because it's dedicated as part of that plat. What they will do, though, is, we propose to vacate, or he proposes to vacate that. When they do the replat, they will add a 10-foot utility easement on the south property line as a replacement easement. Mark Riles, like I said, is on the phone. He can't speak. He can hear you if you have a question for him. He can answer. And I'm hopeful that with my speakerphone here and him on speaker, maybe he can talk to you that way. But we'll see. That's the end of my report. Staff recommends approval of that request to vacate. And want to remind you, of course, to have hold a public hearing for comment.
Thank you. At this time, if you wish to speak for or against the applicant's petition to vacate the easement, have you speak your name and address for record? Call the floor open. See no one move in person or online. We'll close the floor for public comment. Alderman Barger, do you have anything else from Planning and Zoning to mention on this request?
I don't. It felt like it was a pretty straightforward request. The only concern that we had on our board was that perhaps that wasn't the same owner for both pieces. And David assured us that it was the same, so.
Any questions or discussion from the board? I know I, for one, would be excited to see that ground developed, something besides weeds and overgrown grass. So, if we could read the ordinance by title only, please?
An ordinance vacating a utility easement between lots 1 and 2, West Ridge Business Center replat.
Make a motion to approve the ordinance as written.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Second reading by title only.
An ordinance vacating a utility easement between lots 1 and 2, West Ridge Business Center replat.
So moved.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Pull the board, please.
Alderman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Alderman Barger?
Aye.
The vote is unanimous, Mr. Mayor.
I know you can speak back to us, Mr. Riles, but hopefully that's the start of a successful project for you here in Carney. And thanks for being with us tonight.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Were you able to hear that?
Yeah.
We got it, yes, sir.
Good.
Thank you.
We have no old business. We do have an item of new business to discuss.
Mr. Mayor, our fees for second meters, established in 2000, the year 2000, have inflated beyond the cost of parts. A second meter is typically set for irrigation purposes. This is not for the primary meter. Enclosed is a proposed ordinance that is recommended by city staff to adjust those fees for inflation using the Consumer Price Index. And we had drafted that with overlooking, we actually have two places in our codification, maybe even three. And we had to amend that. And so, laying before you is the proposed ordinance that would change it in all places. There's no additional proposals there. It's simply, it's listed in, how many places, David? Three different places? I don't know why we haven't listed so many times in our ordinance, but it just is.
Looks like two different code sections. It's identified in a meter set policy section and then also a water user charge section. So, for consistency, we want to be sure that we change it in all those locations.
Okay. Any additional discussion from staff?
Essentially, it was $600. I think Donnie can tell you what the parts were are on a meter. We set, how many irrigation meters do we set a year? How many-
Two to four, generally speaking. Right now, the parts for the extra meter are running us about $750 per. So, we're losing almost $150 every time we do one right now.
Let alone labor costs and stuff, yeah.
Yeah, that's just hard cost on parts.
Thank you.
Do we know the second meters, when they're used for irrigation, do these have an anticyphon or a backflow to keep anything from coming back into our water system?
Yes, that's all part of it when we put it in. It's all required per code.
And that's not part of the-
Might not provide that at all.
Okay. If there are no other-
Can I ask-
Yes.
Section, what's the difference between Section 2 and Section 3 of the cost? The prices are different?
The water only customer.
The water only is more expensive than-
And the third one?
Kathy or Alderman Barger, there is in Section .110, those are for water and sewer customers. Section .120 are water-only customers. And there's a little upcharge there. I think those are properties that are outside the city limits, that have their own private sewer system and the city provides them water.
Okay. And then Section 3?
Yes, that'd be that third, that .120.
No, on the second page, Section 3, Chapter 700.190.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, .190 is the meter set policy. That should match the .110 section.
So, .120 is just for water customers outside the city limits? Okay, thank you.
Yes, David, I see that. And it's not very clear in the ordinance identifying that those are outside the city limits.
I think, Jim, that's just, was kind of my understanding of who, what people might be water-only customers and not be water and sewer customers.
Could that be spelled out, some more of them, for it's clearer?
We can bring it back. We caught this mistake today and so, and I hadn't noticed that. But it certainly appears there's a reason. And I don't, I guess I understand why the meter set fees are saying 20, you know, they're the same as above. I don't think that's, I don't think that's right. I think there's a peculiarity here that needs to be explained, and I don't think that explains it all.
In the Section .120, the three-quarter inch meter is 600, it started out as $660, not $600?
Right. I agree with you, but I don't understand why.
Okay. And the way that the new number was calculated was CPI for that number that was already listed.
Mr. Mayor, I'm making motion to table.
To the next meeting?
Yes.
I think it's a good idea. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? We will table 8A until we get some clarification. Thank you. We'll move on to Alderman Discussion. Alderman Spencer?
Nothing. Everyone should enjoy their last evening of summer because tomorrow officially is fall.
You're right. Yeah, kind of, I'm ready. Hopefully, we have a nice, long fall like we did last year. A nice, beautiful fall.
I hope so.
Alderman Holt?
Well, normally, I like to end on a positive note, but this has been the summer of not. We've had no parades. We've had no concerts. We have no nothing. And last weekend would have been perfect for Jesse James Parade, Jesse James Festival. The thing, so I want everybody to stay positive because next summer, we need to put on a party. We need to make up for this year. We've had some great weather that we didn't get to really take advantage of. And I've talked to many people that are very cooped up. They're ready to participate in some musical shows. And I had several people who were very disappointed that we still didn't do the demolition derby. So, yeah, we had great weather for it. And unfortunately, things beyond our control made it to where we couldn't have them. And we still have a lot of people in town who want to be a part of those things. So, I just wanted to bring that up that- who want to be a part of those things, so, um, I just wanted to bring that up, that we still need to be looking forward to next year, uh, because, uh, we have a lot of people here in town that, uh, really do want to participate in those things, and they see value in, in what the, the organizations in the city does in, in town, so...
Okay. Alderman Lehman?
Um, I just wanted to bring up, uh, with the weather this weekend, um, my wife and I had the opportunity to take several walks and, and, uh, on two different occasions, two different trails, uh, talked to people that actually did not live in Carney, and actually didn't live surrounding, um, but they actually, uh, like I said, two different, uh, couples actually drive to Carney to, to be able to enjoy our trails. And, um, they, they were just, uh, they couldn't say enough good about how well-kept they are, and, uh, it, it made a, a Carney native proud to know that, uh, we've got people coming in from neighboring communities to enjoy our trails, because they are, uh, more, there's more nature there. And so, uh, it was, it was very, very good to, to see that and to know that, uh, the City of Carney has put an emphasis on our trails, and, and so it was really neat to see, so, that's all I have.
Okay, good to hear. Alderman Barger?
I just want to piggyback on what Alderman Holt had to say, and to, um, to thank all the organizations that are continuing to, um, create a sense of community. One of the things that I think we've all lost a little bit is our sense of community, whether it's with your church or with your school or, or whatever, because we can't be in person. And I think there's been several organizations, I don't want to name anybody, because as soon as I do, I'll forget somebody, and then I'll be in trouble, but, um, I, there are several organizations that have continued to create that sense of community for Carney and, and the area, and I just want to tell them thank you and keep up the good work, and at some point, we'll all get to get together and actually be in the same room together again.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, I'd like to just add one additional comment. Just once again, I appreciate the board's, uh, support on the CARES Act grant to the school district, and, uh, as you know, we, the City of Carney, the school district, the fire district, we have a long history of, of being supportive and, uh, of each other, and, uh, I appreciate that board, so... With that, uh, if we could entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Meeting is adjourned. Have a good night, everybody. Thank you.